Town of Prescott Valley, ready to go to town council meeting, August 26, 2021. Call to order. Welcome everyone. This time I'd like to welcome Pastor David Knight, Bethel Baptist Church, to the front.
Hello everyone. Shall we stand for prayer? Heavenly Father, we're so grateful that Jesus is the good shepherd. And whether it be praying for our troops in all over the world and those in harm's way in Afghanistan, or praying for someone close to home. Beloved Mayor Harvey Skugus, with being on hospice right now, we thank you that you are that good shepherd. And we lift up this world right now and all the things that are going on, thank you that you are the good shepherd and that we can trust you. But Father, we pray for this council right now and our mayor, as they make decisions, that you would give them wisdom and that we would know that you're leading them and that we know that you're that good shepherd and we can trust you. So Father, bless this time. We thank you for it in Jesus' name. Amen. Shall we stay standing for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated.
Thank you everyone. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kinzinger.
Present.
Councilmember Dickinson.
Here.
Councilmember Hepperally.
Here.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Present.
Councilmember Packard.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Present.
Mayor Paguta.
Present.
Yavapai County.
Thank you ma'am. Folks, we're gonna mix it up a little bit off the agenda, so we're just gonna jump right to 6B, Student of the Month. Councilwoman Hepperally will be taking over from here.
Welcome everybody. School's back in, so it's time to recognize our outstanding Students of the Month. The Town of Prescott Valley, in collaboration with the Optimist Club of Yavapai County and Bradshaw Mountain High School, are honoring these outstanding students for the month of August. Please welcome Ayana Smith and Zachary Allen. We are recognizing these students because of their school and community engagement. They have been nominated by school staff and instructors at Bradshaw Mountain High School. Congratulations. Ayana, why don't you go ahead and read us your biography?
Hello everyone. Beware. We were told to brag as much as we could. Bradshaw Mountain High School has welcomed me, Ayana Smith, with open arms. From the age of five, I have lived tucked between the peninsula of Baja California and the mainland of Mexico. Spanish was the language I lived and breathed up until the celebrated age of 15. My 15th birthday, however, was not distinguished by a lavish quinceañera, but by a complete life transition. From 7th grade until the first semester of 10th grade, my peers had graciously elected me class representative. The education system in Mexico is quite different, you see. In this position, I was in charge of directing projects for routinely occurring festivals and earning funds for the accompanying expenses. Before the mention change arrived, I dedicated myself to drama club, constantly participating in many plays and activities. My straight A transcript has not changed since the 3rd grade, thanks to the sleepless nights and dedication I have somehow maintained. Then, the 180 arrived. I nervously made my way into the Town of Prescott Valley, right before the pandemic struck. A mass quarantine defined my first and last year, last semester, sorry, of sophomore year at Bradshaw. It was new, it was frightening. My junior year or two was a complete shock, never having experienced the rigorousness of advanced placement courses. I was unprepared and even overwhelmed at times, but I followed through and managed to obtain the highest possible score for my most difficult class, and I'm proud of My position as treasurer in our National Arts Honor Society club, this same year, provided me with many experiences, along with skills, thanks to the guidance of Mrs. Balsiger. As a club, we dedicated ourselves to bringing attention to the art of this high school's young, talented artists. I'm 16 now, and a senior. I'm staring straight ahead into the future, marching closer towards my dreams. I hope to obtain a bachelor's degree in finance, and eventually, a doctorate in corporate law. All that I am, all that I have achieved, has been made possible by those at Bradshaw Mountain High School and at home. Thank you, Ms. Pope, for nominating me as Student of the Month. Thank you all for giving me this wonderful opportunity.
And now, Mr. Zachary Allen.
Hi. Okay, I'm gonna try as hard as I can to compete with that. Mr. Doll told me yesterday to toot my own horn in a paragraph for winning Student of the Month, but he also gave an AP student 24 hours to create a speech for the mayor. I'm not valedictorian, and I don't plan on trying to cure cancer, so I hope he likes what I come up with. I've held myself to a certain expectation my entire life, which has led me to develop pretty large goals for myself. I've done a lot of things that I'm both ashamed and proud of, and I'm happy to say that this achievement is something that's going to resonate with me. There have been a lot of hours spent on both school and work, in an attempt to better my future, and whether it be writing an essay or bussing a table in an Italian restaurant, I try to put in as much effort as possible. I was incredibly happy when I won the student body vice president position for my school, and even more when I got my first $40 tip. But getting this is pretty great, too. Parking in the front of the school is gonna be awesome, but receiving this is going to be a great way for me to start humbling myself over little feats. A school program has helped me get to know someone that I may have overlooked for a year before graduating, so I'm happy that it allowed me to meet him. All I did was spend a little time trying to change someone's lunch period, so they would be a little bit more comfortable in the school that they would be spending their next four years. Going through high school means completing tests and learning what classes you're not very fond of, but it also means having an enjoyable experience that you remember forever. And nowhere does that include eating lunch alone. I'm absolutely positive that what I did for someone wouldn't have changed their entire life completely, and I'm pretty sure that if I hadn't done it, he still would have found someone to eat with, but I'm pretty sure he's happy with what I did, being that he eats with me every single day. I've come to terms knowing that he means to me as much as I do to him, and he's the reason that I'm getting this. I hope he's not uncomfortable with me getting reward for something that anyone would have done, and having a piece of paper and a magnet that recognizes one good decision I made, but I wanted to help out a pretty cool dude. Although this achievement is something that's gonna resonate with me forever, the plans that I have with him this weekend mean all the more to me.
And Principal Doll.
Mayor, council members, I just, I can't express how important this is. I have the pleasure of having the greatest job in the world. I get to work with people like this every single day. As you can tell, our future's in really, really, really good hands. The students at Bradshaw Mountain High School and in Humboldt Unified School District are absolutely amazing, and I just want to say thank you for allowing us the opportunity to celebrate them on a consistent basis. They deserve it, and as you can just, I don't have much to say after listening to those, too. So, thank you very much, we really appreciate it.
I have to say, giving this award every month is very humbling for me, and I feel like I need to step up my game next to these overachievers. And now, Club Society, Treasurer Mike Whiting.
Well, I don't have a lot to say either. I think we've done this for many years, and it's always a joy to hear the trials and tribulations and the path they are on to, I guess, achieve a greater future for all of us. So we're looking forward to all your achievements here, and then when you go on, and hopefully you think of the U of A, University of Arizona, take that path, south. Anyway, we're here to congratulate our two students, and it's my pleasure as a Secretary Treasurer of the Optimist Club of Yavapai County, as well as on behalf of the Town of Prescott Valley and Bradshaw Mountain, we want to congratulate our Students of the Month for August. Please give them a round of applause. We do have a memento for each, and there's a Humboldt certificate that has their name on it. It does say Optimist Club of Yavapai County, certified to Ayana and to Zachary, August Student of the Month, signed this day. And we do have a tile which has the Optimist Creed, 10 Things to Live Up to Being an Optimist that we do in the Optimist Club every week. So hopefully you use this as a paperweight or to put your Coke on there, just to live by, hopefully, and we look forward to seeing you back in our community after you've made all those great achievements. Congratulations again.
All right, back up to item 5A, Proclamations. This'll be Patriot Week.
Healing Fields of Northern Arizona, Patriot Week, September 10th through the 17th, 2021. Whereas from the tragedy of September 11th, 2001, a new spirit has arisen, a stronger sense of family, community, brotherhood, and patriotism, and we have come together as Americans. And whereas America is fully committed to ensuring our freedoms remain unfettered and sovereign for all generations now and forever, and whereas we wish to honor and remember all those who lost their lives and who have demonstrated the ultimate sacrifice for their country, and whereas we wish to honor and pay tribute to them, to the men, women, and families who were affected in our town, as well as those who worked so diligently to help our people recover. And whereas commencing September 10th, 2021, with the placement of the flags of the Prescott Valley Healing Fields of Northern Arizona, and with the commemoration of the tragic events of September 11th, 2001, we join the entire nation in the recognition of Patriot Day, September 11th, 2021, to remember and honor the invincible spirit of America and its heroes. Whereas this commemoration should be conducted each September 11th throughout the land to include the promotion of global peace and goodwill, the advancement of patriotism and love of country, and the remembrance of those innocent victims who died September 11th as heroes, one and all. Now, therefore, I, Cal Paguta, Mayor of the Town of Prescott Valley, do hereby proclaim September 10th through the 17th as Patriot Week.
Thank you, Mayor, and Council, and Town Staff. County Supervisor Mary Maury, who gave birth to this idea 10 years ago, to Jeremiah King, Captain King, is with TAFPA. He is the order guard commander. He and TAFPA are so important and central to the event, and he also does the Patriot Sandy Schaefer is our education chair. She makes sure that our kids are encouraged to come to the field. We have a generation that has no idea, and today's activity just hits it home again. My twin, Molly O'Rey, she is our volunteer chair, she does our website, and without these three people, it would be a very difficult job. I also want to thank PVPD, who is out there putting up the field, and of course, our Town, our Town Staff, who start the field on September 8th and 9th and make sure that everything is in place. So thank you for a great 10 years, and we are most appreciative. Thank you.
Moving on to item 7, Staff Service Award. Oh, I'm sorry, no. Item 6A, I apologize. Mayor recognition for Polara Health. Ladies, come on up.
In recognition of the rebranding of West Yavapai Guidance Clinic to Polara Health, congratulations on the new branding of West Yavapai Guidance Clinic to Polara Health. Yavapai Guidance Clinic opened its doors in 1966 and continues to serve the community today by offering mental, behavioral, and addiction health services. They are known for, they are known as a dependable, reliable place where people from all walks of life can seek and find help in times of need. They now have 11 clinics in the western part of Yavapai County, and within the last year, serve close to 7,500 patients. As the largest provider of mental health services in the county, West Yavapai Guidance Clinic's professional team strives to be at the forefront of a holistic approach to healthcare. They not only wanted to expand their health services, but also believes their new name, Polara Health, their logo of the North Star, and the statement, "Guiding Your Way to Wellness Since 1966," reflects the guidance that they give. Polara Health celebrated their new title on June 29th, 2021, with the goals of providing accessible and compassionate healthcare, and to focus on having a well-nourished mind and body for their patients. The promise this new name embodies is one of a constant devotion to deliver more broad-based services focused on holistic care. I, Cal Paguta, Mayor of the Town of Prescott I, Cal Paguta, Mayor of the Town of Prescott Valley, Arizona, on this 26th day of August 2021, do hereby recognize Polara Health Board of Directors, their Executive Director Tamara Player, staff, volunteers, and all involved at Polara Health for the excellent healthcare services it provides, and applaud them in continuing to be the Polaris or North Star for the communities of Yavapai County.
Mayor, and Vice Mayor and City Council, I want to thank you all for this recognition. I couldn't say it any better, actually. We have been privileged to serve our community for 55 years, and if you can imagine how things have changed over those years. Over the past, I would say, 20, we've really grown and developed in Prescott Valley, where we have a full continuum of services for life, or for birth to end of life, an inpatient unit, our crisis stabilization unit, and we really could not do it without the support from the community, and in particular, the Police Department, who was an incredible partner in helping us address the needs of our community. So thank you so much for this opportunity and this recognition. I really appreciate it.
All right, now we're moving on to Item 7A, Staff Service Award for Daniel Mora, IT Support Technician, five years. Come on up, buddy.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. This is an exciting night for me. Two of my best friends are celebrating years with the town. Couldn't be happier. I would like to read something I wrote up for Daniel, who is our IT Support Technician. He is a wonderful employee. Daniel Mora has been with the town since August of 2016. He was hired as the IT Support Technician, spending half of his time with the library and the other half doing IT-related functions within Town Hall and the Police Department. Before Daniel arrived, that position had been one of constant change, as previous technicians had gotten different jobs and moved out of state. Thankfully for Prescott Valley, Daniel decided that this is where he wants to stay, and he's been with us for five years now. Daniel's a hard worker, always eager to learn new things, and is goal-oriented. The running joke within the department is that he wants to be called the Assistant to the IT Director until he takes my job. In all seriousness, Daniel is a pleasure to manage. He has a strong desire to provide great customer service to staff members and citizens alike, and can often be found helping staff with requests and citizens that rent any of our conference rooms. He is always responsive to issues at the library, whether it be down printers, resetting servers, running the endless stream of Windows updates, or just helping to lighten the workload. Ask anyone, and they will tell you that Daniel is an absolute pleasure to be around. I think you would be hard-pressed to find anyone that doesn't get along with him. He is genuine and has a great sense of humor. Our Community Services Director, affectionately known as Van Herren to my danner, said that Daniel is possibly the happiest and funniest person she has ever had the pleasure to work with, and that I would wholeheartedly share in that assessment. He also shares my affinity for funny movies, fantasy football, superheroes, and collecting Funko Pop figures. If you've seen my office here or at home, you can blame him for that, since he got me into all that stuff. Daniel, thank you for your dedication to the town of Prescott Valley over the last five years. It has been a pleasure to see you grow, and I look forward to working with you for many years to come. Happy five years. And Daniel, Daniel has his wonderful wife Susan, and his four children, Christian, Elena, Abigail, and Grace, with him here tonight.
I'd like to say thank you very much for the five years. Like he said, I get along with everybody, love working here, and hope for many years to come.
Next up is Larry Prentice, GIS Division Manager, 20 years.
Mayor, Council, it's a great pleasure tonight that we honor Larry Prentice for his 20 years of service. Yeah, that's 20 years. Larry's always been around. One thing I always like about Larry, he's always reinventing himself, you know, as Casey said, he is one of the techie guys, but Larry always reinvents himself. I remember when I came to the town, that we had all these drawers of information. Well, Larry has reduced that down to what GIS is, really reinvented, picked up another staff member, but all the great exhibits you see that really present all the information well, reduces it down. Larry does all that. He constantly challenges himself. The latest one has been with the drone. Larry, on his own, went out and purchased a drone, and some of the great work he did. One of the best examples, when we opened up the new Santa Fe Park, Google Earth hadn't kept up with, you know, it wasn't new, it was new enough that the imagery was old. Larry says, you know what, I think I can fly that and get you the imagery you want. So lo and behold, if Google can't do it, Larry will go do it. So we get that run of our image of the finished park, and that's what you saw, and that's always behind the scenes. So I'd like to have Caitlin read what I wrote for Larry.
Larry hired on with the town and brought with him his craft and expertise for the practice of Geographic Information Systems, or GIS. Larry's grassroots effort to initiate GIS and the use of computers to store the vast volume of data, and subsequent manipulation to produce exhibits and mapping for presentation has blossomed over the 20 years that Larry has worked here. Gone now are all of the drawers of data files and maps to support all the various town departments, with all this information easily stored in the cloud. Town departments, too, include Public Works, Utilities, Community Services, Community Development, and the Police Department, are all very reliant upon the GIS Department to produce their reporting and presentation materials. You can always rely on Larry to take your basic vision and exceed your expectations for the presentation product. His development of easy-to-use interactive mapping assists town residents to be able to, to be able to search at their leisure or browse information on mapping from the comfort of their home. Larry has made GIS a valuable and necessary tool in today's town services. Outside of work, Larry is a dedicated family man, supporting his three children in school and their sports activities. His wife Jamie can be credited with the creative flair in his office to enhance the guy stuff left around his, and his technical world. Larry also grew up in Prescott Valley and will always be the biggest voice in Public Works, cheering on his beloved Bradshaw Mountain Bears football team. Larry, congratulations on your 20 years of service to the town and professionalism you bring to the Public Works Department.
Counsel, what?
Thank you so very much for your dedication. 20 years is a long time, and we so appreciate every contribution you have made to our town. It's very valuable. I know this afternoon, when we were having a ribbon cutting, there was the drone above us, and it was fun to think that, again, this was going to be a film or a video that was going to be available for the townspeople and citizenship to view and enjoy. So thank you again so very much.
I was going to tell a really quick story. Last week, I was researching the parcel connected to the water rights on, actually, Item 10H on our agenda tonight, and it's pretty far north in Chino Valley, and I was looking at it, and I was like, I really want to get a visualization of where this is within the Prescott AMA, and I was looking at it side by side with generic maps, and I just couldn't, I was like, I need a map overlay of the AMA, and so I went over and I clicked on map overlays, and it was literally the first option. You'd already thought of it and got it in there, so thank you. I appreciate your tools, and I use them all the time, so thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Between you and Cutter, you're doing some really amazing things for us for retail business attraction, to generate more sales tax. The presentation that he gave us at our Republican Women meeting here recently, where you guys are mapping all the available properties and existing properties to use to help attract more businesses here, is fabulous and long overdue, so I can't thank you enough for that. And then, a couple weeks ago, when I reached out to you about getting me some information for one of our industrial spec builders, you got it for me like that. And it's so important, the timeliness is so important when you're talking about economic development, and I can't thank you enough.
20 years' service, that is great. You're an example of why the staff likes, although you work for Norm, so that's kind of iffy there, but congratulations, sir.
That is amazing, and I just think of all the changes that you've seen along the way, and that, how many more are coming with the future, so thank you for that. And the GIS system is user-friendly, and it's open to the public, so they can use the GIS as well, correct? So there's information usually on your own parcel number, so when you're looking up your address, you can find your parcel number, you can find out your tax info, things like that. So it's an amazing program to use, so thank you for the use and development of that. And again, the drone shots are amazing again, with the green scenery that we have around town, and thank you for staying current on all the modern technology that you use. That's amazing. Thank you.
Congratulations on the 20 years. I want to also thank you for taking your own personal resources to purchase the drone originally. Couldn't get it out of Norm's budget, so you had to take it out of your own personal budget at that time, but it is a resource that now we have available for us as town officials if we want to check out areas, so again, it's with technology changing. Again, want to thank you for doing that, and again, thank you for your 20 years.
Larry, we've heard all the great things you do at work. One of the things is, when I met Larry many moons ago, we were on Prescott Valley Little League Board, and it's a testament to an individual who volunteers his time to better the community. And Larry spent many hours just out there, whether he was chalking fields, or putting up fences, or coaching a little league team, and that says a lot about him as a person and as a family man, and a lot goes out to your wife, your daughter, and your son for sharing you with us and all the hard work you put in at the town, and even after-hours when he's off the clock, and what he does for Prescott Valley. So that says a lot, a lot about this man, so thank you for all you do.
Those are some kind words. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for this recognition. It's very special. You know, all this obviously would not be possible without key people, you know, and one of those being my Lord above for blessing me with this job and the great opportunities, and of course, my wonderful family, my wife, and my youngest daughter, who's here with us tonight, and they're my rock, so I appreciate it. To Norm, for his ongoing support and leadership in giving us the flexibility to do our job effectively and efficiently, that goes a long ways. Last but not least, is the great team of staff I work with day in, day out, many of which are here tonight. So you guys, you guys make it happen. I could not absolutely do this without you, so you guys are like family, and you make it all possible, so thank you.
Guys, just so you know, he was just talking about how his fantasy league this year, he's going to dominate you guys, so just so you know. We're going to move right to Item 9, Consent Agenda. All matters listed under Consent Agenda are considered routine by the Town Council and be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately for discussion and possible action later. Council, we've all had a chance to review this, and I would like to first start by removing Item 9E to be considered at a future date. So as we move forward, this Consent Agenda will be, with the exception of 9E.
So Mayor, with that, I would like to recommend approval of the consent calendar minus 9E by electronic vote.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Yes.
That passes, Mayor.
Thanks, ma'am. We're going to move on to Item 10A, Reappointment of Cal Nye, Building Board of Appeals. Vice Mayor, I believe you're taking this, and Cal will not be present tonight.
Mr. Cal Nye. Not here.
He's not present tonight.
Not here, okay. So Councilmembers Don Packard and Roger Kinsinger and myself recommend the reappointment of Cal Nye to the Building Board of Appeals with a term ending September 5th, 2023, and that's my motion by electronic vote.
I just like it. Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 10B, Reappointment of Charles Tatro, Building Board of Appeals. Vice Mayor? Charles, come on down.
So Councilmembers Don Packard and Roger Kinsinger and myself recommend a reappointment of Charles Tatro to the Building Board of Appeals with a renewal date of September 5th, 2023. What do you have to say for yourself?
My wife and I, we moved here eight years ago, and it's the most incredible move that we've ever done. This community has got some of the greatest people that we've ever met, and I think it's a real privilege to be able to work with the town and support the town and their endeavors, and I'm happy to be here.
Awesome.
We appreciate you, sir.
With that, I'd like to recommend, approve, recommend Charles Tatro to the Building Board of Appeals by electronic vote.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes, Mayor.
Yeah, oh, hang on a second. Sir?
I just wanted to mention that Chuck also volunteers at our Police Department, so I thank you for all of your involvement and dedication to the town. I really appreciate it.
Great job, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10C, Reappointment of Richard Leedhead. Yeah, give him a clap, that's okay, you can clap. Reappointment of Richard Leedhead, Building Board of Appeals. Sir, come on down.
Hey, Richard, thank you for being here tonight. So Councilmembers Don Packard and Roger Kinsinger and myself recommend reappointment of you to the Building Board of Appeals with a renewal date of September 5th, 2023. What do you have to say for yourself?
I've been here forever, so no sense leaving.
Mine as well.
I started building in Prescott Valley before it was the Town of Prescott Valley in 1974. Been here the whole time. Larry left Prentice, but I used to officiate him when he played football. So my family and I are a large part of Prescott Valley. We have been for a long time, and we appreciate Prescott Valley and the receptions that we've had, and the things that we're able to do, and giving back a little bit is what we need to do.
So volunteerism is really important, and we appreciate you. So with that, I'd like to recommend a reappointment of Richard Leedhead to the Building Board of Appeals by electronic vote.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir, I don't know if you recall this or not, but you actually drew up the plans to my first home.
I do.
About 15 years ago, and nowadays, there's CAD system, not Richard here, by hand. He drew up a set of blueprints for my house.
Still doing it.
And my house, the house is still standing, so that's
All right, Mayor, this is an application for a Series 12 liquor license for Grumpy Sicilian to be located at 725 East Florentine Road, near Fries where the old streets of New York used to be. We did post a notice of hearing at the location for 20 days, and our office did not receive any comments pro or con recommendation. The owner was invited tonight. I'm not sure if they were able to make it, but...
Now it's time, because it is a public hearing, anyone that wishes to speak for or against this, here's your opportunity. With that being said, it doesn't appear as if anyone would like to speak, I'll close the public hearing. Move on to item 10E, New Series 12 Liquor License, Grumpy Sicilian. We'll be looking for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I move to recommend approval of a Series 12 liquor license for the Grumpy Sicilian by electronic vote.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 10F, Bungalows on Market Street, Final Development Plan, FDP 21-005. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the Town Council. The item before you is a request to consider an improved application, the Bungalows on Market Street. Bungalows on Market Street LLC is the applicant, and the agent, RVI Architecture and Planning, for Final Development Plan 21-005, Bungalows on Market Street, which proposes 112 leased and multifamily detached and duplex single-story dwelling units on a little over 11.2 acres of land. I'll go to the next slide.
For orientation.
So this project sits just north of State Route 69, off Great Western Drive, and as you're on your screen, the project is located at the southwest corner of Market Street and Great Western Drive, and just for orientation, just northwest would be the terrace apartments, and further west towards the south, the Kia dealership, and along Crown Point Drive, the Extended Stay Hotel and Full Swing Batteries make up what's known as the Glassford Regional Marketplace. By way of background, in 1999, 81.7 acres, including the site where we rezoned to C2 PAD, and the final development plan was subsequently approved for the Glassford Regional Marketplace, showing roadway access and designating acreage into tracks A, B, and C. In 2001, the northeast portion of Track B was rezoned from C2 PAD to Resident Services PAD for the terraces at Glassford Hill Park, which is a 226-unit apartment complex. Since then, as mentioned before, the Kia dealership, Comfort Inn or Comfort Suites Extended Stay and Full Swing Battery cages make up the original Glassford Regional Marketplace. That brings us forward to, in 2021, the Planning and Zoning Commission on April 12 approved the preliminary development plan for this site and recommended approval to the Town Council to rezon the project site from C2 PAD to RS or Resident Services PAD, and then on May 27, the Town Council approved the rezoning pursuant to ZMC 21-001. It is at the time in April that the Planning and Zoning Commission stipulated that the commission reviewed the final development plan prior to it being brought forward to Town Council, and as you know, typically, the final development plans are brought forward to Town Council for final approval. And therefore, just a couple of weeks ago, on August 9, the Planning and Zoning Commission considered the final development plan, FDP 21-005, and recommended Town Council approve. The final development plan consists of, again, new construction of 112 multifamily residential units on just a little over 11.2 acres of vacant land. The project, when built, amenities will include onsite leasing office, a central gathering place with a ramada, a fire pit, barbecue grill, a turf area, and of course, a dog run. The project, as required by Town Code, the project site will be landscaped with stormwater detention areas, and pursuant also to Town Code, the project is required as a multifamily development to provide 50 square feet of enclosed storage space. Since each of the units will have their own rear yard and be fenced with a six-foot-high wall, staff has determined that this suffices meeting the requirements for enclosed storage space. All the buildings, all the dwelling units will be single-story. There'll be a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units. Most of the unit mix will be ones and two-bedroom units, excuse me. The one-bedroom units will be constructed as duplexes, and the two- and three-bedroom units will be standalone buildings. The project is required 217 onsite parking spaces, and the project is increased or is providing more than that requirement of 220 parking spaces, of which six will be accessible park spaces and 120 covered. A couple of issues at the Planning and Zoning Committee that were brought up were regarding ingress and egress. As you can see, and I'll point, I'll move to a better site plan, this above site plan, you can see that the circulation is a loop, and there's only one point of ingress and egress onto Market Street. The project itself and the applicant has committed to all the residential units, excuse me, to be fire sprinkled, and this provides them an exemption from providing two points of access or egress and egress, ingress and egress. The second issue that brought up by Planning and Zoning Commission was regarding the fire monitoring system. Again, the fire code allows for an exemption if the project provides fire sprinkling, and again, the project has committed to all the units to be fire sprinkled. The Fire Marshal has also approved, provided preliminary approval of the plan itself. Therefore, the recommendation before Town Council, Town staff recommends that Town Council authorize signature of Resolution 2197 approving a final development plan 21-005. This concludes Town staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions, and to note, the agent is also represented here, and he can answer questions as well.
We might as well bring him up.
Okay.
Or her up. Council, at this time, we start asking some questions if you have them. Vice Mayor?
Yes. When this came to council last time, let me start from the beginning. When it came to, when the change of zone came to planning and zoning, there was a lot of discussion at the Planning Commission meeting with the concern of the one entrance and exit, and also with the smoke alarms not being commercially monitored, and the tight turns for the fire truck. And so then, when it came to us during the change of zone, I brought up the same issues, and then when the final map came back to planning and zoning, Commissioner brought it up again, and so I'm bringing it up a fourth time. And I did research on the fire code, and I know that it's not a requirement that they be commercially monitored, but I just am not comfortable that when, that there would be a horn on the outside of the building that would make a very loud screeching noise if there was a fire, and hopefully, somebody would hear it and call 911 before there was family, personal items damaged. And so I know we were told that there's an onsite manager, but people have lives, and I am just not comfortable with it not being commercially monitored. And I would like to add that as a condition of approval, if possible, to the resolution. On page 224, it would be item B or C under 3A, and so that's my comments. And in the future, I know we talked about opening the development code, and we talked about it again today at strategic planning, but I want this ingress and egress and this fire commercially monitored issue brought up when we open the development code.
Would the developer like to comment on it? Welcome, sir. Please state your name.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. My name's Mark Ready with RVI. I'm representing the applicant. So first of all, I want to start by saying that I do appreciate your concern for safety for all of our residents here in Prescott Valley, and we share in that concern, and you know, we want to make sure we're committed to developing a safe and quality residential community. When I came before you the first time, this issue came up, and I wasn't, I'm not a fire reviewer, so it's not my area of expertise, but I did say in the hearing that I would go back and do my research and come back to you with some additional information. I did that at the Planning Commission and then here today. So I met with two people. I met with Rick Chase, who's the Fire Marshal for the Central Arizona Fire and Medical Authority, and then I also had conversations with Chris Moody, who's a senior consultant with Metro Fire Equipment Incorporated, which is the company that installs, designs and installs all of the fire safety equipment in all of our projects and projects all over the state of Arizona, commercial residential projects. So I want to start with the Fire Marshal. Fire Marshal said that they don't, obviously, you know this, they don't require monitoring systems. The fire code was designed, the International Fire Code is designed to provide safe environments for everybody, and we're meeting the code by the letter of the law in every aspect. There's, the term exemptions is in there, but it's really a provision that says if you only have one access, you have to sprinkle the buildings. If we had two access points, we wouldn't even have to sprinkle the buildings, and we probably wouldn't, but because we have one access point, we're sprinkling the buildings, which just provides another layer of safety for the residents. So we're doing that, we're meeting that code. They don't have any kind of a requirement to review, they don't have any mechanism to determine, you know, what the requirements are, because there isn't a requirement for this type of residential development. So if we did it, they wouldn't be reviewing it anyway. But the more important thing is, when I met with Chris Moody, he was a little bit taken aback at the question to begin with. He said he's never been asked that question before, because residential construction doesn't require monitoring, and residential construction types, the R2 construction, doesn't even accommodate or account for the requirements to provide the monitoring systems in them. And what he told me was that the monitoring systems require an independent system for each building. They have to have a separate fire panel, they have to have a cell dialer system, they have to have a fire enclosure area, and they have to have flow monitoring. Each one of those is required for the building, and that's required for all commercial buildings, and we're doing it for our clubhouse. But to do it for 112 individual units would price us out of the market. We couldn't build these units and make the project work because of the cost of doing that for 112 individual units. So it's really not feasible to do a monitoring system, a commercial monitoring system. We talked about, well, what about residential monitoring systems? Well, the problem with that is that if you own a home and you want to install a monitoring system, it's connected to your cellphone and your system, but we're a rental community, so we've got people coming and going. We can't do independent, individual monitoring systems that are paid for by the tenants, because it just, it just doesn't functionally work that way. So you know, I guess I would just close by saying that we're definitely meeting all of the safety requirements that are required in the IFC and the UFC and in the zoning code. We would oppose a stipulation that requires that, because we don't think that we can physically do it, we don't think we can even design it and build it that way, so we would definitely oppose a stipulation that required that as part of this project. We have the other project that's already been approved in Prescott Valley that's under construction now. We've got 25 different projects around the state of Arizona that we're building, and there's, this type of development is being built all over the country, and not a single one of them is requiring any kind of a monitoring system. So we would just ask that we be afforded the requirements in the code that are here to provide safety for the public.
Thank you, sir, for that response. Councilman?
Yeah, I got, excuse me, I've driven past that place where you're going to put your units, and people from the other apartment complex park all over there. At times, that street is almost down to one lane. I don't see how a truck, fire truck or any truck could get through there. I'd be concerned of what, is there any plans to widen that street so these folks, the existing apartment folks can park out there?
Yes, Councilman Packard. We are required to widen both Great Western and Market Street adjacent to our frontage to the full width of the required right-of-way, so we'll be building the full half-streets on our northern and our eastern boundary. The other thing that we have to do as a requirement of site plan approval is we have to put turning template radiuses on all of our parking areas and entrances to ensure that we meet the fire code requirements, the trash truck requirements for their largest fire truck that they have. And so those templates have been applied to this project, and they meet it in every single case. So they meet it coming in, they meet it around every single corner. We've designed the parking lots to incorporate those required turning radiuses, and that's part of the site plan approval process that staff and the fire department goes through when they review this. So we're meeting all of those turning radius requirements with the improvements that we're providing, including the widening of those two streets.
Thank you.
Sir, I have a question in regards to your storage. Was it your decision for storage to not have external storage and just recommend the fenced area count as storage?
Well, we had a lot of discussions with staff about that when we did the first project over at 69 and 169. These are relatively small units. They're single-family, one, two, and three-bedroom units, and when we talked with staff about the intent of the requirement, we concluded that the backyards, which are fairly large for apartments, normally apartments have a small shade patio area that's maybe a third of the width of the unit. These backyards cover the entire length of the unit by a minimum of eight feet in depth, so they're all, there's several hundred square feet each, and so there's a lot of room and storage in there, and so staff made the determination that that meant the intent of the requirement.
So my concern is, we require other apartment buildings, and we even require, say, a builder was to build a duplex with just a carport, and that regular builder with a carport is required to do the 50 square feet of somehow storage. And I don't know how I justify to them why they have to do it, but yet, our explanation is if you have a fenced-in yard, you can just put all your stuff in the backyard. Is that what we're basically saying?
Yeah, yes.
So we, okay, if that's what we're saying.
Yeah.
I totally disagree with that, and I think that's something that, as a direction of the town, we need to have storage in a storage area. We just can't start stocking up totes in the backyard and think that's going to be sufficient.
Yeah, I think this product is a little bit unique, because unlike a traditional apartment complex where you've got a small patio area where you fit a couple of chairs and that's all you can fit in there, these are full, these are full backyards. They go the full length of the home, so they're between 25 and 43 feet long by eight feet deep minimum, and they're completely walled in and closed, so they're not, you know, you have privacy back there as well. And so I think it's a different situation than a traditional multi-story apartment complex, where they don't have those opportunities for that space, that private space that's theirs, they own it, they control it while they're living in that unit. So I think it is a little bit different, and I think that's what staff interpreted when we, when we were talking to them about this, you know, with the first project.
So how do I justify that with the duplex? How do I tell that contractor that he needs it?
I don't know if staff wants to address that. I'm not, I'm not sure. I don't know what the duplexes look like, so I'd have to see what...
So if a duplex has the same yard that your project has, and we're requiring it for them, why is it different for your project?
I don't know. That would be a staff question.
Eric, would you like to address that?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So the difference specifically on this point is the zoning of the site. So in a duplex-type situation, very few of our duplexes are zoned in RS designation. RS designations and R2 designations are multifamily designations, so those require only 50 square feet. And a lot of the duplexes, those are in R1L or so forth, and typically with those, they either have some kind of garage, which is included as that storage piece, or they also have the backyard. In these cases, they're, again, as the applicant had said, they're a little bit different animal, if you will. So the cabin project, which they have on 169, exactly the same. Dorn has the two projects that we approved, and so the determination at the time with those approvals was that the backyard, because it's fully screened, meets that storage requirement and actually exceeds, it's typically over 50 square feet.
Gotcha. If I recor-
that storage piece.
Sure.
Or they also have the backyard. In these cases, they're, again, as the applicant had said, they're a little bit different animal, if you will. So the cabin project, which they have on 169, exactly the same. Dorn has the two projects that we approved, and so the determination at the time with those approvals was that the backyard, because it's fully screened, meets that storage requirement and actually exceeds, it's typically over 50 square feet.
Gotcha. If I recall, I voted no on the 169 and 69 as well, so, thank you.
I have a quick question as well. So these are rentals, correct? They're not necessarily purchased. What if somebody did want to add in a small storage area in their own backyard?
These are all rental units, so these are managed by a professional management company. The residents that live there don't have the, because they don't own the units, they don't have the authority to make changes to the project itself. The management company maintains the backyards, the front yards, they change light bulbs when light bulbs go out. So they manage the entire project. So a resident, when they, when they rent, just like a traditional apartment complex, they're living there, they bring in their furniture, but they can't make physical improvements or changes to the structure itself.
Okay, but then they could like put something in a U-Haul or something like that then too, or some other off-site storage facility, correct? Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I have one more question.
Hang on. No, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor. Go ahead, don't.
Can you tell me how wide the driveway is minus the car parking? So the area beyond the lines for cars and the axes?
Yeah, I, I think they are 26 feet wide and the parking stalls are 20 feet deep.
One length of the car.
It looks like they vary between 24 and 26.
I'm sorry, Mike, can you, or Mark, can you use your microphone?
Sorry. It looks like they vary between 24 and 26. Where they're adjacent to a fire hydrant, they have to be 26 feet. Where they're not, they're 24, and that allows for two-way traffic as well as for fire trucks to be able to maneuver through there.
Question about the backyard again and stories. So if a renter wanted to purchase their own small storage unit that's portable, made out of PVC normally, it's going to be shorter than the six-foot wall, so it's not going to be able to be seen. Is that possible, or because you got people taking care of the backyard, they won't let them do it?
No, they can do that, absolutely. As long as it's a movable, a movable piece of equipment, they could, they could get a storage unit, leave it there. The, the, the maintenance in the backyards are typically, what they consist of is we plant a tree and we have a little concrete stoop area for some chairs. We do a little small artificial turf area and then some rock. And so there's nothing, they don't have to mow the lawn or anything like that, so it's just maintaining the irrigation for the tree. So if they wanted to put a storage unit in there that they could take with them when they left, that's absolutely something they can do.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Legler, it looked like you were adjusting your microphone. You have in common on this?
Just getting ready to see if I needed to help with any motions, so that was all I was doing.
Fair enough, sir. Council, you have anything else? Vice Mayor?
Would the developer be willing to, to do the seven-by-seven storage in the backyard?
That's, I, I don't think they would prefer to do that because there's a lot of residents that don't need the storage and they'd rather have the space than have an area that's blocked off for storage that's not necessarily needed. So I don't think they would want to do that for every single unit. I think as, as Councilman Kinsinger asked, you know, if somebody needed storage space, they could go to Home Depot and buy one of those plastic units that they could put back there if they wanted to keep it out of the rain. There is a little bit of an eve overhang in the backyard, so there's a little bit of area that's protected. But I, I don't, we've never done that before on any of our projects, and I don't think that's something that they would want to have to do for every single unit because it would, I think in a lot of cases, it would, it would take away from the space in the backyard that residents enjoy.
Do, how do you, or the management, is it a management company or do you keep these in-house?
It's a management company that.
How does, does, are the backyards inspected to make sure they're not filling up or having not-so-nice stuff back there and?
Yeah, there are gates in every single backyard that are accessible to the management company. So they go back there to check irrigation lines, they go back there to trim the trees. So they go back there periodically, and if they see something, if there are things overhanging the top, they'll tell them to take them down. They can't put, you know, big tall umbrella structures that, you know, interfere with other people's views. So there's, there are requirements and regulations that are built into the management company so that residents can't do certain things that have a detrimental impact to the other residents that live there.
Councilman?
Okay, going back again to the backyard then, as Lori just said, some renters are not known to be the neatest, so they'll just throw the trash bag out in the back. And then all of a sudden, it starts to build up and build up and build up. So as your management people come through the backyard, if they see that happening, what's your management company going to do?
They would probably clean it out or ask the residents to clean it out. Yeah, I, I haven't heard of that happening, but I suppose it could. But yeah, there's, there's rules in place that, that ensure that they're not going to have smell or noise or things like that. I mean, if somebody wanted to store trash bags back there that was below the wall and it wasn't disturbing anybody.
Well, it's garbage. Well, I'm saying trash bags, I'm talking garbage.
Yeah, no, that.
We don't want the rodents back there.
That wouldn't be allowed.
No.
No.
So the subscription to good housekeeping would have been canceled in the backyard, so we would just want to make sure that's not happening.
And we provide trash enclosures throughout the community for the residents to take their trash, so.
Okay.
There would be no reason for them to do that.
Okay, thank you.
So along with that, the way that I interpret the diagram is that you have a five-foot retaining wall in the, for the backyard, is that correct? And then they each have a gate with access to like an easement area? So is the trash pickup in the easement areas or is it in the front where they park?
The trash is in the dumpsters in the parking lot. So if you look at the site plan, you can see there are one, two, three, four different trash enclosure. There's two trash enclosures within each one, so there's eight large dumpsters that are within the parking areas. So residents would walk out their front door, throw the trash in the, in the dumpsters, and then the trash truck goes through the parking lot and picks the trash up in their truck and then, and then kind of comes out. So they, they go in a one-way direction, they pick up each can, and then they, they leave the premises. So just like a traditional apartment complex, there's not, there's no easements or property lines or anything because it's all a single lot, there's, there's one owner, it's the property management, so it's just a rental unit. It just is designed more like a single-family home in that they're detached units, so the structures are detached, but the, the, all of the requirements are similar to an apartment complex in terms of trash collection, parking and things like that.
And, and back to possible fire. So as far as ingress and egress, we have only one for vehicles. But now that you've indicated that there are, are gates on the retaining walls in the backyards, that allows pedestrian or families to escape, those are escape routes as well?
Correct, they could be. If they were in the backyard, yes. Or if they had to go out the back way as opposed to the front way. That's correct.
Vice Mayor?
So I want to say that I appreciate your description of it not being cost-effective to commercially monitor the buildings. I just wish that, you know, this being the fourth time we had to bring it up, that there would have been more communication and letting us know that either at the first meeting or what have you. And I just want to go on record to say that when we open this development code and/or look at the building code, that the ingress and the egresses and the monitoring is something that we seriously look at and rely on our partners at CAFMA to help us with this because I'm really not comfortable with this project and I, I just, anyway. But thank you for your discussion.
So just to be clear for record-keeping purposes, originally Vice Mayor made a stipulation. I want to make sure that's no longer.
Right.
No longer stipulation, so I'll be looking for a motion on this as it sits, as it's before us, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. A motion to authorize the mayor or in his absence, the Vice Mayor, to sign Resolution Number 2197 approving final development plan FDP 21-005 for the bungalows on Market Street by electronic vote.
Second.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Vice Mayor Hunt? That passes, Mayor.
Thank you. Item 10G, Intergovernmental Agreement, Town of Prescott Valley and Humboldt Unified School District. Usually you arrive with the cheers and chants and claps or what's going on?
There's a cheerleading.
She got wore out yesterday.
There was a real downer before she came up, so. Take your temperature.
Right, Casey?
Oh, that was a tough one. Oh, my gosh. All right. Mayor, Vice Mayor, oh, Council, sorry, it's a little loud there. Tonight, I'm here to get your approval for an IGA for the Humboldt Unified School District and the Town of Prescott Valley. As we know, John and I today signed this agreement, here we are, right there signing the agreement. No, I, I met with John today and we did a faux signing, but I just had to get that picture of John and I working together. I just love John. But the agreement basically is that between the 10 elementary schools, high schools, and with Parks and Recreation, we have this joint facility use policy. So we can, Parks and Rec and the town can use schools' athletic facilities, athletic fields and classrooms. As we know, with Parks and Recreation, there's a huge need for space for programming and for volleyball, soccer. This summer, we use the HUSD East Campus for our open gym, which was pretty successful. We had about 10, 15 kids, which to me is huge. That meant that those 10 and 15 kids had a place to go this summer to play sports. So it's a great, great agreement. So the HUSD has access to, of course, our Mountain Valley Splash. The swim team use our pool every year. They also have access to Ramada's Athletic Fields, the Civic Center, Theater on the Green, meeting spaces, and of course, the library, the auditorium and the crystal rooms. So generally, kind of a breakdown on what we're going to be giving to HUSD is we will be mowing the Mountain Valley, Mountain View Elementary School, Coyote Springs Elementary School, because we have, Antelope Park is just right across the street from Coyote, and of course, Mountain View right there at Mountain Valley Park. So that was just an easy give and take that we could do. Also, we provide bleachers, seating staff during football games, which our park staff does. We also will aerate and fertilize twice a year. And consulting, we have a great parks guy, our parks manager, Nick Krobloski, who has assisted staff in the past to run through their current system needs and offer recommendations. Basically, what we hope to do is there are two giant overgrown grass fields at the HUSD campus, East Campus, and we want to help eventually get those to be, to be softball fields. And we need fields, we need them really, really bad. So we're hoping that Nick can work together with the staff over there and help develop that. And here's Nick, right there. Nick's a good guy, and this is really the part, I wanted to highlight our parks crew because they're amazing, and really, they're the ones who are going to be stepping up to help do all of this. So Adam, then of course, Nick, Gilbert, Jordan, Joe, Bruno, Mark and Fred, they're all amazing and they work very, very hard with all the 26 parks that we have. So my recommendation is for you to vote on this agreement. It's amazing, and it really helps not only staff here, but of course, the citizens of the community.
This is just an example of the partnership that we're having with Humboldt Unified School District that's just going to enhance our community and is so important.
Absolutely.
And I'm so grateful that you've taken this step to get us there, and it's just going to benefit our citizens, it's going to improve more fields for athletics.
Yes.
Which is desperately needed.
Tournaments.
Tournaments, exactly. It'll add just capacity that we haven't had before.
Right.
So you and your team doing a great job, and we are going to continue to, to increase that sports tourism footprint. Vice Mayor?
Casey, so can you back up just a tad for me?
Sure.
We, we have or we have not had this before?
We have. This is just a renewal of the agreement, and we added in those pieces, the mowing and, and we're offering that to the, I mean, we've always kind of done it, but we just put it in the agreement to, to make it real.
Awesome.
Official.
So I'm looking at, under their section.
Mm-hmm.
Where it says district facilities, I don't see the gymnasiums in here for us to program basketball.
They're athletic, they're athletic facilities.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. I'm very, very, very excited about this. I think we need to toot our horn and do a joint press release on this because this is amazing. And like the mayor said, our tourism efforts are sports tourism, and this is just going to knock it out of the park.
No pun intended.
[laughing].
Councilman?
I just want to point out that in our Fentanyl Working Group meetings, we spend a lot of time discussing programming and what we can do for kids when they're not in school, whether after school or during the summer. And these athletic facilities from HUSD play a huge role in that. So we definitely appreciate your work in this partnership and HUSD's part as well. And I just want to say, when I was in fifth grade at Mountain View, the pool was brand new and we could see it from the playground. And we could not wait to get over there for the end of school party. So.
Yep.
I, I appreciate their, their, the feeling for the partnership.
Anything else, if not, Council, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve an updated intergovernmental agreement between the town and Humboldt Unified School District Number 22 for joint use of equipment and facilities by electronic vote.
I second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Moving on, item 10H, purchase type 2 water right and associated, associated property. Mr. Mundelo, welcome.
And Mr. Mundelo, I don't mean to interrupt, but I do, would like to make at this time a public statement that there is no relationship with the Schumachers. Although our name is similar and it will not be accusing myself for any of the voted, votes that are needed or presented. No relation.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor, Council, we talked about this last week. It works steady, but I'll quickly go through some of the key points again. This is type 2 water right purchase for 68.6 acre feet. The water right is currently owned by Schumacher and Schumacher. The water use is established as a pre-1980 groundwater use. It predates the groundwater code. It's unique in the active management area. The type 2 right can be moved. We will, if we purchase this, move this into Prescott Valley service area. We will withdraw water if we withdraw water from our wells. Overall, we plan to use this as an offset for commercial and multifamily workforce housing uses. Those uses are charged to Water Resource Development Impact Fee, which funds this purchase. We will not be using this water right to obtain certificates of assured water supply or to build single-family housing or anything like that. It is intended as an offset. This is the main point of the purchase, it's a water right. We get a little embossed certificate from the Department of Water Resources when we're done, and that provides ownership. Water rights are a real property right. They're, they're not just paper, they're as real as the title to a car or the deed to a home. The seller insisted that the property, which has been the place where this right has historically been put to work, put to use, goes along with the sell. And this is 19.52 acres of land up in the Dale Real Springs area northwest of Chino Valley, I'm sorry, northeast of Chino Valley. Little map of the area, you see over on the left, the outline of the Town of Chino Valley with the red splotch up there. Overall, the, the total cost of the purchase is $750,000 even, and we have budgeted unencumbered $803,000 for this purchase.
Council, we have questions for Mr. Mundelo.
Hey, John, a couple of weeks ago from, we heard from one of our citizens that state, based on water audits, Prescott Valley was losing about two times the normal amount. based on water audits, Prescott Valley was losing about two times the normal amount. Would you go bother to explain that a little bit?
Thank you, council member. I know Neil Wadsworth, our utility director, is in the audience, and he would be best suited to speak to water loss in our system. Neil, would you?
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. So, I believe the reference that you're talking about indicated that we were losing water at twice the normal rate of the water system, and that is not correct. The reference actually is for a, an index, it's called the Infrastructure Leakage Index, and it actually refers to a ratio between how much we're losing compared to a theoretical minimum or what the Arizona, I mean, the American Water Works Association calls it unavoidable losses. So, they know you're not going to get to zero, but for our size system, there is a certain number, and we're 1.8 above that. So, we're not, you know, even, even 1.8 above a normal loss, we're 1.8 above this theoretical number. If you compare our 1.8 to other systems across the country, we're actually pretty much in the, in the average of what systems lose. And in fact, when the AWA classifies leakage indexes, they classify them based on numbers that are like less than three, then three to five, five to seven, seven to nine, or seven to 10 and above 10. So, we're actually in the lowest classification and what they say you should target when you're doing these loss studies and try to get down to. So, can we do better? The answer is yeah. And, and the reason for the study that, that was discussed, we, we actually volunteered for that study because we wanted to benchmark where we were. And the whole point is you come back and you do those kinds of benchmarkings every couple of years, and in the interim, you start making improvements to try to reduce those numbers and get down to a sustainable minimum that you can reach that's economically feasible. And so, that's what that number means.
So, basically, it'd be hard to ever get to that low number anyway because you'd have to be replacing pipes in the future on, on an ongoing basis. Am I correct in that? You, is?
Yes, the number is recognized that you may never reach 1.0.
Right.
And, and typically, that's because of economics, and, and it may mean replacing all the pipes in your system or doing other things that economically you just can't afford to do them. And so, they recognize there's going to be some levels of losses, and one is the theoretical minimum, but anything below three is considered to be acceptable.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman.
John, type 2 water rights can only be transferred and used within the same AMA, correct?
That's correct.
So, the parcel that's associated with this purchase doesn't, that doesn't mean that we have to get the water from that parcel and then transfer it to here.
That's right. Yeah, to clarify, it's not a physical transfer. We don't build a pipeline, it's simply moving the paper water right and designating an agreement through the Department of Water Resources that it can be pumped out of our town wells if we use it. If we use it, by the way, I just want to make it clear that it'd be used to offset other uses that could be occurring. That's the intent of this. It's a safe yield target we're trying to, to hit here. This helps us get there.
And I know we touched on this a little bit last week as well, but just in case our regular viewers missed it, just go ahead and cover it again. Type 2 water rights are grandfathered from the 1980 ground, from before the 1980 Groundwater Management Act, correct?
Yes.
And does that grandfathered status undermine the goal of safe yield?
No, not at all. These are uses that were occurring during a time period historically throughout our active management area. In this particular case, this right goes back to probably the 1800s, around the 1890s, when that railroad was built. Clearly, the state understands that you have to recognize existing uses before these regulatory requirements go in. So, this use would not exasperate groundwater mining.
And just to clarify, these water rights cannot now or ever be allocated for residential use in subdivisions.
That, that is correct. What could happen, to be clear, is they could be extinguished. There is a formula for extinguishment, and those extinguishment credits could be used. I calculated the extinguishment credit that could be attained on this water right when we close escrow on it in 2022, and we would get two acre feet. Clearly, that is not a good management policy. We would never do that. If you wait until year 2025, you get zero credits. So, it, it's a declining curve.
And just to be clear, who does allocate water to the subdivisions in Prescott Valley?
The Arizona Department of Water Resources is the one that allocates water to subdivisions. And I, I know we talked about this last time, and I put a slide at the end of my presentation if you're interested.
Of course.
If I can find my way back to it. And for the listening public, this helps, helps illuminate how water rights are managed within groundwater basins in Arizona. There are five groundwater basins that are strictly managed. The Arizona Department of Water Resources was created by the Arizona, I'm sorry, by the 1980 Groundwater Management Act, and manages the body of laws and allocates water resources throughout those AMAs. They make the decision on whether there's enough water for residential development. They've made those decisions on virtually every parcel in Prescott Valley for residential development, and it is not the town council's purview to override those decisions made by the state. So, the state makes the decision, not the town council.
Thank you.
Council, if you have anything else for Mr. Mundelow?
One, one comment on Councilmember Kinzinger's conversation with Neil. After that water audit was done, the town took it to heart and put in force a number of these actions that are shown on the screen. All right. We don't know that this is a trend, but we saw a 50% reduction in losses, if you can get your mind around the double negative, 50% reduction in losses in 2020 over the previous three years. I don't want to suppose that one year is a trend, but it shows good promise.
That's great.
Anything else? Not council, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve a purchase agreement for type 2 water rights and related land parcel with Schumacher and Schumacher LLC, no relation, in the total amount of $750,000 by electronic vote.
I second.
Clerk, please call the vote. Thank you, ma'am. We're going to revert back to item eight, council comments. Start on the end. Councilman, you have anything for us tonight? We're doing council comments.
The only thing I want to thank is our new town manager. We had our first day of strategic planning today, and we will finish up with three more hours tomorrow. But it's given the council, the town manager, and some of the department has a chance to get together, brainstorm some ideas, and get us all on the same page for what we're looking for in the future. So, again, I want to thank our new town manager, Gilbert.
Councilwoman. Councilman. Vice Mayor.
I, I just want to think, I want to pass on a thank you via Chief Martin that I talked to Shasta Mejia, who's the branch manager at Credit Union West, and they are so grateful for the services that you provide to them. This was the third time that they had been robbed, and they have plans to move and kind of improve their, their floor plan, but they said, she said, "We love those guys and they're so good to us, and we glad, we're glad they caught the bad guys." So, thank you.
Councilwoman.
I just want to add on to the Patriot Week proclamation and make sure everyone knows about the Patriot Run, which is September 11th. There's a 10K, which I am doing, so if anybody wants to come out there and help me, I would appreciate it, a 5K and a one-mile fun run. So, even if you just want to go out and walk and listen to the bagpipes and enjoy the nice, cool weather because it is early in the morning, come on out and, and take part in that. You can check it out on Facebook at PB Patriot Run.
Councilwoman.
Yes, I want to thank the Prescott Valley Parks and Rec for taking Roger, Councilman Roger Kinzinger and myself on a tour of the Fitzmaurice ruins on, a couple days ago. It included a hike, and we had a couple of guides with us, and this is an invitation-only type of a hike and tour, and there were 20 of us, and it was quite challenging. Needless to say, Roger and I already made up our minds, we're not going to be doing it again. But once we were up there, the view was magnificent. We could see all of the Fame Park property and the castle, the chapel, and it was very informative, and we have a lot to be grateful for in our town for this magnificent piece of property and this lake that is for the use of our citizens.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 11, comments from the public. Consideration and discussion of general unscheduled comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. Any such remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited, limited to three minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. At the conclusion of the unscheduled comments, individual members of the council may respond to them, respond to the item addressed at the discretion of the mayor, or they may ask the town manager to review the matter or ask that the matter be placed on a future agenda. Now is the time, folks. Clerk, do we have anyone listed?
We have one for Scott.
Apologize. My name is Scott Freitag. I'm the Fire Chief, Central Arizona Fire Medical Authority. I declared today Dress Down Day at the Fire Department for me. So, it worked well. I just wanted to come before the council tonight. This past legislative session, the legislature approved the use of certificates of participation by fire districts for pension funding to refinance the debt, and that is the only tool available to fire districts for any type of paying down that unfunded liability. Today, we locked in our rates at 2.92%, which drops from the 7.3% we're paying to PSPRS. We'll close September 16th, and over the life of the loan, we will save taxpayers over $21 million as a result. So, what we're paying will still continue to increase over the next several years, but it will level off. Had we stayed the path, it would not have leveled off, and within 10 years, we are going to be at an unsustainable annual repayment. So, this really helps us as we move along, and I think it's better for the taxpayers moving in that direction. On a final note, the ambulance issues continue to become worse, and in talking with Phoenix Fire Department, the problems that we're experiencing up here are now the cascading effect impacting Phoenix Fire. If anyone would like more information about that, I'd be happy to talk to you off to the side, but basically, it, it's down the backside of the mountain towards Wickenburg and then hits Glendale, which impacts Phoenix. So, and as of August 19th, between July 1 of this year and August 19th, there were 225 separate occurrences where there were zero ambulances available for the Quad City area. That's, that's quite a few instances in a very short period of time, and they've grown up significantly just in the last week since the 19th. We continue to transport where necessary. The state continues to investigate us for the transport, but they don't investigate the transport company for not transporting. So, it's an interesting dynamic, but we'll work through it. So, we continue to work on that. With that, I have nothing else, just a quick update. Thank you very much.
Sir, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Clerk, anyone else?
No, sir.
Anyone else in the audience who forgot to fill out a form? No? With that being said, move on. Item 12.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
All in favor? Clerk, call the vote.
Councilmember, there you go. That passes, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Everyone have a great night. Thank you for coming out and sticking with us.